Good evening. Notice of a Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article V, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, June the 5th, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Our regular meeting will now begin. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Father God, we realize that you know the beginning from the end, and we humbly admit that we do not. Your word says, "Jesus said, 'I can only do what I see the Father doing.'" And so how much more do we need the direction from you, Lord God? We ask you to lead and guide us, Lord, in this meeting and in the days to come. Lead and guide our mayor and our commissioners, and, Lord, bless each one of them and their families for the sacrifices they make, for the time that they put in for the city of Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. We will begin with the Mayor's Activity Update.
I just want to welcome everybody. I know it's summertime and it's hard to get things going, but especially all our friends from the UTRGV and everyone else, Tito, Nacho, everybody here, thank you for being here today. Any Commissioners?
Next, we have the Commissioners' Activity Update.
Yes, I have an update. Okay. Good evening. We have some very exciting news to share with you regarding our Brownsville Animal Regulation and Care Center, also known as the Bark, which is our animal shelter. I am so excited to announce that today, we have finally hired a vet, a part-time vet, that will now be able to offer low-cost, no-cost spay and neuter services in the city of Brownsville. This is a monumental moment. As you know, every year thousands of pets are put down, and they were worthy of loving homes, and they were perfectly healthy and fine, and so I'm so proud of the city of Brownsville and the city staff, and of course, the City Commission, for spearheading this initiative to offer this service. Also, I have some really exciting news as well. We will be extending the hours of adoption. I know that we kind of have like, you can go between 10 and 12, or 1 and 3, but now we will be curtailing our services to be VIP for anybody that is willing to adopt. And I'm so proud of our interim city manager, Michael Lopez, for making sure that everybody that adopts animals in Brownsville knows that this is what we should be doing, and this is how you save a life. And on that note, I have a friend here. His name is Nolan Navarro. He is a Brownsville resident.[245.23][245.23](Applause). He's very famous. You might recognize him from New York Fashion Week. He travels the world, and I love following everything that he does. He's a Brownsville resident representing all of us, and he has a really exciting update to tell all of us.
Hi, my name is Nolan Navarro. This is my business partner, Juan Martinez. I currently run a nonprofit organization called the Public Notices here in Brownsville, and it helps people under the age of 21, both female and male, get the access that we need to resources to enter the fashion industry, whether that be New York, California, or anywhere else in the world. So together, me and my partner Juan, we have generated this whole fashion show with eight months of work since the day that I moved to New York till today, on June 9th, at 7:00 PM, at Galota Petroni Museum. We're going to be hosting a really big fashion show that's open to the public, completely free, and it's the first interactive fashion show in the valley. And interactive meaning, all the guests who are attending have the option to find outfits and get help with it from us personally, whether they need to come into the studio and find one, whether they need to text us, call us, anything like that. And they also get to create their own stuff during the fashion show, and I'd also like to pass on some invitations to you guys. Everything that we've been doing has been months and months and months of work, and we've been doing fashion shows since the age of 15 here in Brownsville, but we've never had the opportunity to present it to the city before. So this is big, and I'd like to thank all of you guys for having us today, and happy Pride Month. And aside from that, this isn't the last fashion show that's going to be happening this year. We have other people associated with the Public Notices that will be hosting another fashion show towards the end of the year, which will be later announced. So I thank you for having us today, and I would like to thank Galota Petroni Museum for hosting us today, and on Saturday for the fashion show.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. Real quick, real quick, can you share with us the shows that you've walked in, just so the Brownsville public knows?
Yeah. I've walked for many shows, actually. I've been doing Fashion Week since I've turned 18, once I graduated high school. I went straight to New York and started doing all that. I've walked for Ballin' with Spain, Ovidian Sons, and these are like big brands that you can find, like a Dillard's and stuff like that. And from coming from a small hometown like Brownsville, I could never forget a place like this. Brownsville is everything to me, and I want to bring everything that I can from New York to Brownsville, so.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You can feel the invitations in the back to make them clear, so FYI.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Do you have something, please?
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Proclamation?
Next agenda item is proclamations for the University of Texas of Rio Grande Valley Economics Team.
Okay.
Would you please come to the front?
Whoever's here from UTRGV, please come up forward. Yeah, why don't you come up here? We'll do the proclamation up here. Okay, go ahead, Ben.
All right. A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Economics Team. Whereas, the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley UTRGV Economics Team led a victory at the 15th Annual CME Group Trading Challenge by earning first place out of 500 competing teams. And whereas, the UTRGV Economics Team are members of the Robert Vacker College of Business and Entrepreneurship Student Organization, the Trading Association. The Trading Association was founded in 2016 by Professor of Economics and Finance, Dr. Bruno Arthur. The UTRGV Economics Team members include Christopher Martinez, Michael Villarreal, and Jose Naveja. Whereas, the CME Group Trading Challenge is a four-week electronic trading competition open exclusively to teams of graduate and undergraduate students, offering them a chance to learn hands-on techniques for trading futures across all major asset classes on CQG's real-time professional trading platform. Teams were given $100,000 in simulation fund to trade in the first round. The UTRGV Economics Team advanced to the championship round, where they were provided with $250,000 for an additional two weeks of trade, and were ranked one final time. Whereas, the UTRGV Economics Team finished the international competition with a total of $706,585, handily beating out second-place competitors Kansas State University with just $533,910, followed by the University of Malaya, the Universidad de Bogota, Jorge Tadeo Lozano in Colombia, and Johns Hopkins University in Baltimore, Maryland. And whereas, the UTRGV Economics Team achieved a 182.63% return in two weeks of trading, and are the 15th Annual CME Group Trading Challenge First Place Champions. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor the University of Texas Rio Grande Valley Economics Team, and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to celebrate and support these outstanding students who have excelled in the area of economics. Done on this fifth day of June 2018. Congratulations![637.16][637.16](Applause).
(Inaudible).
Yeah.[640.16][640.16](Laughter). Have them send a resume.[642.16][642.16](Laughter).
Congratulations. Good job. You going to say a few words, or guy you want to remember?
Just, just very quickly. Thank you so much. We deeply appreciate the city's support for everything we do. We were just touring our new building that opened on our campus. This is a beautiful location. The city has always been very supportive. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts for everything you did.
Well, we thank, and we thank this young man for his great talent, so keep it up, young man. Go for it.
Good job.[673.73][673.73](Applause).
Next proclamation is for Mr. Dylan McKenzie Lozano Lomelli.
Dylan McKenzie Lozano Lomelli. Whereas, Dylan McKenzie Lozano Lomelli was born in Brownsville, Texas, to Sherry Lomelli and Jeanette Lozano, and his sister to Andy and Jackson. Dylan is an outstanding student who has earned a cumulative grade point average of 98.56, and is a member of the National Junior Honor Society, a varsity choir singer, an athlete, and volunteer. Whereas, Dylan plans to attend Stanford University in Stanford, California, to obtain a doctoral degree in biology. Dylan aspires to pursue a career as a conservation biologist to conserve and protect our valuable natural resources, and to serve her country as President of the United States.
All right. Yes.[786.11][786.11](Applause).
Whereas, on June 21st, 2018, Dylan and her family will travel to the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution meeting held in Washington DC to accept the award as a National Seventh Grade American History Essay Contest winner. The American History Essay Contest encourages young people to think creatively about our nation's great history and learn about history in a new light. Whereas, Brownsville, Texas is home to the Dubois hit chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution founded on April 21st, 1936. The National Society Daughters of the American Revolution founded in 1890 and headquartered in Washington DC is a nonprofit, non-political volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children. Whereas Dylan's passion for history, her commitment to academic excellence, and creativity are an inspiration to the youth of our community and contribute to the spirit of our city. And now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Dylan McKenzie Lozano Lomelli, and further encourage the citizens of Brownsville to support and celebrate the accomplishments of our youth locally and at the national level. Done on this, the fifth day of June 2018. Congratulations.[880.23][880.23](Applause).
Also, you have my vote. Next, we have a presentation, a zoning presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the Commission. The Planning and Development Services Department was formed in April 2016, uniting two departments, the planning and zoning and building and permits, with the intent of providing a one-stop-shop, no-room-door policy and re-engagement. In the two-year span since then, our team has been expanding its pool of talent to provide our citizens with the quality service that they deserve. Up on your screen, you will see the education background of the people that comprise our department and who have been diligently working to find solutions to the challenges that we are presented with day in and day out. I would like to thank you all for your patience and guidance as the department continues to build capacity. This presentation will be the first of many presentations and workshops planned with the intent to disseminate information appropriately, facilitate our processes, as well as educate on the details of adoptive codes and ordinances. Now I would like to present Francesca Linder, our zoning subdivision administrator, who will strive to demystify zoning tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. As Miss Minor said, I will be presenting and demystifying zoning by providing some of the basics and fundamental concepts of it. So zoning determines how land or property can be used in a city. It promotes orderly patterns to support the public good, and it regulates activities, uses that can take place on a property, as well as the size of buildings that can be built on property. So there are three zoning districts, three types of zoning districts in the city of Brownsville. There's a use district, which regulates what types of uses are allowed, such as residential, commercial, or industrial. And there are area districts, which regulate the physical development of the land, such as density, setbacks, height. There are also overlay districts that create unique, different restrictions, and they... in the city of Brownsville, every property has a use district and it has an area district. It does not necessarily have an overlay district. So I'm going to talk about each type a little more detail. So use districts, we have 12 different categories, and on... here are the first six. These are the lower six. Dwelling is a residential category. You can have a single-family home, and you can have potentially a duplex. These are just two examples from each district. If it has an asterisk by it, it means there's some sort of condition. In this case, for duplex in dwelling, it would have to meet the area district requirements, and I'll go over that in the next area. So in medium retail, you could have a hotel, or you could have some sort of retail sale of household items. The conditions on there is the size of the store would have to be less than 10,000 square feet. So here are the next six. General retail 4C is going to be our most popular commercial category in this use district. You can have things like a bank, or retail sale of goods, or rental. The condition on this is it has to be... it can't be in public view, so it has to be inside. So you'll see different uses, such as a pharmacy, or CVS or something. Now, as the commercial districts get higher, 1C is going to be the lightest commercial use, and then 9C is going to be the heaviest. So heavy industrial is 9C. This is going to be our least restrictive use category. It's going to allow things such as stone cutting and scrap iron or junk storage. So you can have... you have the most options with 9th commercial, but it can also have some uses that you don't necessarily want other uses by. For example, with heavy industrial, it does allow noxious industrial, and that means it can produce some sort of irritant that can affect the neighboring property. For instance, with stone cutting, it can, if it's done outside, it could potentially create a cloud of dust that would go and affect the neighbor's use of their property. So we have 11 area districts in Brownsville. They are represented by letters, so Area District J is the full name of it. We have 11, and I'm going to go through the most popular, and it's going to be the first column, so that's J, H, G, F, A, and Z. So again, the area districts are going to regulate the physical development. They set the setbacks, the height, and the minimum size. So here we have some renderings of what this looks like. So Area District J is going to be our least restrictive area district. What this means is it's going to have the smallest setbacks. It's going to allow the tallest building, and it allows the most apartment units per acre. So in this case, the minimum size for a single-family home is going to be 40 feet for the lot itself, and then it will have a front setback of 25 feet, and a side and a rear setback of three and a half feet. So you can see that right here on this picture, picture number one. And on picture number two, you can see that perspective. You can see what the side setback and the front setback looks like, and you can see that allows a maximum of six stories. Now, Area District H has the same setbacks, however, it only allows for three stories instead of six. So H and J are very common for apartments. The reason for this is the intensity that's allowed. So Area District H allows 25 units per acre versus J, which allows up to 50 units per Area District G is very common for new single-family developments. It has a 25-foot front setback and three and a half for the side and the rear. It allows a maximum of two stories. It also has an intensity of 12.5 units per acre. Also for this one, in this chart, you can see that there are different requirements for apartments... I'm sorry, different apartments for single-family units and for duplex. So it would have to be a larger lot to accommodate a duplex. That would be the condition from the use category. Area District F is very similar to G. It requires a larger side and rear setback, five and a half feet. Area District A is also seen for single-family units, especially in the older parts of Brownsville. And the front and the rear setback on this are 25 units, I'm sorry, 25 feet, and the side setback's going to be five and a half. So if you... when somebody applies to rezone from A to, for instance, G, they're probably looking to reduce that rear setback, because for G it's only three and a half. Also, for this one, for A, it requires 9,000 square feet for a duplex, as opposed to a single-family unit, which only requires 6,000. It also requires a front width of 75 feet versus 50. And Area District Z, you'll see on the outskirts of Brownsville, when land is annexed into the city of Brownsville, it's given a use district designation and an area district designation, because every piece of property inside city limits has to have both. So what's most recently been annexed is going to have this dwelling Z designation. So if it's a new piece of land, and they're doing a commercial category, some sort of commercial use, they're going to rezone the area district and the use district. Now, we can see in some areas where land was already built out, for instance, there's a single-family subdivision, and then it was annexed into the city of Brownsville. So it was given a dwelling Z category. However, they might have been built to 25 foot instead of the 30-foot front setback that's required by Z. So if there's this mismatch, it means that the current homes are going to be non-conforming, and if there's any vacant lots, they're going to have to meet the 30-foot setback. So when you're going down the street, in the middle of the block, there can be a house that's built five feet behind. So not only is that odd when you're going through the subdivision, but it's not as safe. So in some cases, we do a city-initiated case to correct this. We also have overlay districts in Brownsville. We have 15 different overlay districts. Each regulate a unique... a unique aspect of development. It's done for the public good. In this case, the... I've pulled out the 031, which is the non-residential overlay district. It prohibits these uses, which include homes, group quarters, RV parks, medical inpatient facilities, schools, churches, daycares, medical clinics, auditoriums, and stadiums. Now, an example of why this could have been initiated was it could... it's near the landfill. So you don't want single-family homes or anywhere where someone lives near a landfill that's not necessarily safe. So that's an example of why this would be implemented. So the Texas Local Government Code grants a city the authority to adopt a comprehensive plan. It's essentially a long-range plan that shows how the city thinks the city should develop. It helps, it helps control that. When we make zoning recommendations, it is based off of this. We do present it here to you, as well as in our staff report. So here is a current zoning map. I just took this this week. So this area, you can see how it has the grass and the water. So that's not inside city limits. So anywhere in the map like that, it's not inside city limits. Now, for instance, this area, the tan, it is inside city limits, and it's zone dwelling. So in this map, what you can see is along the express... ah, you can't see that. Along the expressway, there's different colored parcels. So the colors represent a commercial category. So this blue that's along the expressway is general retail 4C. So you'll see that along the expressway, as well as along 802, and here along Palookasal. So that's where we have a lot of our retail uses. And then you'll see fanning to the north and to the south, and away from these large roads, you'll see the tan. So that's going to be where the residences are. And this is, this is a good way for development to grow, because you don't want necessarily a commercial category right next to your home, but you do want it close enough that it's convenient for you. Also, this black out here off the port, that's 9th commercial. That's that heavy industrial that you don't want to live by. Down here by the airport, that's 8th commercial. So that's our second highest use district. The zoning ordinance also sets land spacing requirements for wet establishments. So when a business wants to sell or serve alcohol, they do need to be permitted by the city of Brownsville. That application gets sent to our, the Planning and Development Services Department, and we make sure that it has the correct zoning and it meets these land spacing requirements. A wet store, for example, would be any store that sells beer, for example, maybe a gas station. So you can see the restrictions for that aren't as high as a bar, which has to be 1,000 feet from a school, church, park, dwelling, or dwelling district. So if, if a piece of property doesn't meet these land spacing requirements, we do have a route they can take, and I'm going to go over that in a moment. So we have three types of applications. We have the rezoning, which changes the use district, the area district, or both districts in the same application. It does not expire. There's also a specific use permit, and that's for uses that are not allowed by right, but may be allowed under the right set of conditions. We do require a site plan for that, so you can see the conditions. It does not change the use district or the area district, and it can expire. A conditional use permit allows wet establishments that do not meet the land spacing requirements. So that would be if, for example, a bar did not meet the 1,000 feet, they could apply for a conditional use permit and then be granted the permit to sell that alcohol. So the Texas Local Government Code requires that public notices be sent to every property within 200 feet, and that each case is advertised in a local paper. We advertise in the Brownsville Herald. This is a minimum. We are working on a rezoning public notice survey that should be rolled out this week. And what we're looking for that is input from residents, from business owners, and from developers. We want to make sure the rezoning process is transparent, fair, and business-friendly.
I'm glad you're working on that, because that last case that we had, where it was like within the 200 radius, but it was a ditch, I'm really glad that's being reworked, because a lot of people get short-changed in situations like that.
Yes, and we're going to have that available online. Yes, and we're gonna have that available online, and we're also gonna have it in our office, so, and it's gonna be in English and Spanish.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay. So after an application is submitted and is advertised, this is the process. The first hearing is with the Planning and Zoning Commission, where they can approve it or deny it. If it's denied, the applicant can appeal here for, at the City Commission, in which case it would require a higher majority vote, a three-fourth majority. If, if the case was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, then it has a first public hearing at the City Commission, where it can be approved or denied. If it's approved, it goes for its second hearing here at the City Commission. If City Commission denies a zoning case, it can be appealed at District Court. Okay? So moving forward, we will be providing quarterly updates of zoning trends, so we can, we can know how the development is shaping and how it affects zoning, or zoning affects it. And we will have that rezoning notice survey, and we're gonna have it online on our website, and here's a link, it's planning.cob.us, and we will have it in our office. And here's our contact information if anybody has any issue, questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes. I'm excited to see that department becoming more user-friendly.
That's a good question.
User-friendly.
Number five.
Next, we have consent agenda items A through P.
Motion to approve our consent item agenda.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all very much.
Next, we have our public hearings, public hearing number six, public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 2018 dash twelve thirty-four dash B to amend chapter three forty-four vegetation, Article Two, Section three forty-four dash twenty-six, establish Section three forty-four dash twenty-seven, composition, and terms of office, Section three forty-four dash twenty-nine, organization and staff, and Section three forty-four dash thirty-one duties.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. I'm presenting this on behalf of the BBC. So we have Ms. Carol Demoss, Chloe Dodson, and Oscar Zertuche?
Yep.
Okay, close enough. To, they work very hard at many, many beautification committees to present these proposed changes to the ordinance, and I will let them explain it. Thank you very much.
Chloe? Yeah. Really? Yeah. Good afternoon, Commissioner, good afternoon, Mayor. My name is Chloe Dodson, I'm the Vice Chair of the Brownsville Beautification Committee, and I'm also the Director of Real Estate Development for the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville here in Brownsville, Texas. So, I don't know how I got to be on this, on this board, but I'm so happy to be, to be serving, so thank you for that, that privilege. So what we've basically been able to do, we went over the history of BBC, and we wanted to solidify some goals and some strategies in order to reach those, those strategies within the next couple of years, and the first thing we, we wanted to do was revamp our ordinance. So if you look through your ordinance, not really big changes, but just small changes, we wanted to put a maximum to our, the number of board members, so it's twelve now, keeping three ma, uh, keeping the existing seven board members, which is a good thing. And then we also add a little bit language of responsibilities and roles when it comes to BBC and managing KBB, keep, keep Texas brown, uh, keep Texas beautiful in Brownsville. So please review it if you have any questions or concerns. After this is approved or denied, or what happened today, we would like to then present our bylaws, and then we would like to present you guys with a presentation to show all the different projects in your area, as well as the goals that we have, both short-term and long-term here in the near future.
Sales?
Very good. This is a public hearing, is anyone here on this issue?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
So there was no changing to, change to thirty-three forty-four dash thirty-two, right?
No.
There, there's been no changes to that last section?
No, Commissioner.
I already knew the answer, just kidding. I have no idea what he's talking about.
No changes.
No.
No. I didn't see it.
There was no change.
Anyway, there's a motion to approve, and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Good presentation.
Thank you for serving.
Keep up the good work.
Next is the public commentary. We did not have anyone to sign up, so we'll go on to the next agenda item. Items for individual consideration, action item number eight, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint members to the Civil Service Commission.
Mayor and Commissioners, as you've been hearing, it's a lot of user-friendly and collaboration and transparency is what we're doing. This is another example, the Civil Service Commission did reach out, it's, according to charter, the City Manager is allowed to appoint. My idea is to bring it up to the Commission and see what we did. We did reach out to our local unions we partner with, the police and fire. We do have two applicants for under the fire, which is Marco Longoria, George Green, and the Police Department did recommend Ben Nunes, Police Union, and then, as my recommendation is William Kingsbury. So if I would like to start out, my recommendation for appointment is William Kingsbury.
Motion to approve William Kingsbury?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we still have the Fire Department, the Fire Union did offer up Marco Longoria and Jorge Green, those are the two names they did submit.
What about Ben Nunes?
Uh, that is the Police Union request.
Oh.
That was, the police went for, he was the former fireman, I think.
Oh, sorry, correct, you're, you're correct. The fire guy, the fire, sorry, fires Marco Longoria and Ben Nunes, and then the police is Jorge Green, you're correct, I apologize for that.
Motion to approve Ben, I'm sorry, I'd like to nominate Ben Nunes?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries for Ben Nunes?
And then last one, you need just to correct my, Jorge Green was nominated by the Police Union, that's the only name they offered.
And William, who is, Mr.?
William Kingsbury is, as again, we're putting one for the Police Union, one for Fire Union, and one for City Management. William Kingsbury is for, is the City Manager.
So.
And he works with who, Michael?
He's a retired, he's a retired police commander.
A retired police.
Okay, now, so now Jorge Green's up, and do we have a motion?
I move, I move to appoint Jorge Green.
Okay.
And he's over the City Managers?
No, he's, he's appointed, requested by the Police Union.
Oh, okay.
Make a second.
Did you nominate him? I'm concerned 'cause of a lawyer. I'd like retired staff.
Uh, and again, we do have the offer, on the left-hand side is our current members, and I think the only one that did offer up to Santiago Galasa, he did recommend, he did request a reappointment, but just to offer up that that's what, but again, these are the individuals who are already serving under the committee.
So he already sits there, and he understands the logistics of what happens with that board?
That could be, Commissioner, yes, correct.
So he's, he understands the situations and the importance?
Oh, yes, he's mostly, he would be the experienced one who's been on the board, correct? I think he's been there for a while.
I like the fact that he's experienced, and I would like to nominate him.
So who do we have, so who do we have so far?
Oh, right now, currently we have Williams Kingsbury and Mr. Ben Nunes, those two, and we're missing a third member.
So Mr. Kingsbury would be?
And so is our, we have a, somebody nominated for agreement, we didn't get a second, is Santiago Galasa, is willing to serve again?
He's willing to serve, that's correct.
I'll make the motion, oh, go ahead.
Well, there's still, I was confused, I was confused on who we actually appointed, so we have two, and we have a motion?
Yes.
We need a second on, on Jorge, we're gonna go with Jorge.
Well, then I guess, uh.
Or we can, if you don't have a second, then we'll, we'll entertain Santiago, that's really the only choices we have.
Well, second, Commissioner, he has a.
On Jorge, okay, that's good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner.
Action item number nine, consideration and action to revise the disadvantaged business enterprise program and the updated DBE goals adopted under Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash zero ten, as required by the Federal Transit Administration Fiscal Year Twenty-Eighteen Triennial Review.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Sarah Giovannick, I am the Grant and Public Outreach Manager, and along with me is Robert J. Garza, he's our Assistant Director, and we are from the city's Transportation Department, Brownsville Metro. Based on the Federal Transit Administration Fiscal Year Twenty-Eighteen Triennial Review, it was noted that Brownsville required language revisions on the disadvantaged business enterprise program as indicated in your packets. These are standard requirements as mandated by the Federal Transit Administration. Brownsville Metro respectfully requests your approval to these, Brownsville, excuse me, disadvantaged business enterprise program revisions as adopted under the Resolution number twenty-eighteen dash ten.
Okay, so action item, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that, to approve the language that they need.
Okay.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Item number ten?
Action item number ten, consideration and action to award a contract for the Gazelle Avenue Street paving and drainage project.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. This is for a street improvement project for Gazelle Avenue, in the amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, ninety-two dollars and eighty cents to GNT Paving in Brownsville. We recommend approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Carlos.
What district is Gazelle Avenue in?
The district of South. The district of South.
Thank you. That's good.
Item number eleven?
Next, we have action item number eleven, consideration and action to authorize a submittal for economically disadvantaged counties EDC program application.
Honorable Commissioners, this item is a request from Texas, it's actually, it's a very good request for us, because Texas is proposing to replace a bridge off of Owens Road, and it's estimated to cost four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, the replacement, and the city's contribution would be approximately forty-six thousand, or thirty-four thousand, I'm sorry, and this EDC application will reduce that contribution to eleven thousand, giving us savings of thirty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twelve?
Action item number twelve, consideration and action to acknowledge the C's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report CAFR for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty-seventeen.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, today I'm gonna introduce Mr. Ignacio Garza, he's the partner with Carl Riggs and Ingram, that will introduce this item, present on this item. I have some books here that I'll hand out, so you can follow.
Mayor Commissioners, my name is Ignacio Garza, I am here on behalf of Carlos Barrella, who is a partner in charge of this job. Unfortunately, he woke up this morning with a bug slash virus and wasn't able to be here this evening. He did, however, prepare his remarks, so it takes me back to college, 'cause Carlos was a very good note-taker, and his notes got me through college. I am now reading his presentation regarding our audit, or your audit. And we're gonna take a few minutes just to touch on some of the highlights, and major highlights of the Comprehensive Annual Report for two thousand seventeen. Your CAFR is the two-hundred-and-forty-four-page report that Mr. Granado just handed out, is that details the financial results of this past year. Is that, it is divided into several sections, as noted in the table of contents, and it is submitted to the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, for a Certificate of Achievement. If you look on page fifteen of the CAFR, the copy of last year's Certificate of Achievement is on page fifteen. And as members of the Commission, you know that you are ultimately responsible, or the ultimate responsibility for these financial statements lies with you. And the best way to understand what is presented in this report is to read the financial section beginning on page twenty-three, the management's discussion and analysis, which summarizes in much simpler language and last fiscal year's financial history, and incorporates much of what is included in the entire report. The financial statements themselves begin on page forty-five and incorporate the footnotes, which go on into greater detail about certain aspects of the financial statements themselves, such as a breakdown of your fixed assets, your bonds payable, and definition of terms and policies. So rather than go through all of that, what we'd like to do this evening is simply tell you about the highlights of last fiscal year and where you stood at September thirtieth, the close of your most recent year. Since the city operates on a fund accounting system, for purposes of the presentation tonight, we will concentrate on the general fund, but the city has a total of thirty-nine funds, all which play an integral part in the operations of the city of Brownsville. Revenues of the general fund totaled a hundred and five point seven million dollars in fiscal year two thousand seventeen. That was fifty-three thousand dollars greater than last year's total, yet it was, the two largest components of those revenues are property taxes of twenty-eight million and sales taxes of twenty-seven point five million. Overall, your actual revenues exceeded your budgeted revenues by approximately three-point-six million dollars. Expenditures of the general fund totaled a hundred and one million dollars, three-point-three million dollars more than in two thousand sixteen. These increases are, come from increases in expenditures experienced in all areas and were primarily the result of salary increases and increases in capital purchases and improvements. In comparison to what you had budgeted, your total expenditures of a hundred and one million were four million dollars less than what you had budgeted, with favorable variances across the board. After transfers to and from other funds, the general fund balance increased by slightly over six-hundred thousand dollars to twenty-nine point nine million. Your budget anticipated a six-point-seven million dollar decrease in your general fund, so you actually exceeded your expectations by over seven million dollars. The city's goal is to maintain an unassigned fund balance ranging from fifteen percent of the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures and transfers out. Based on your two thousand sixteen and seventeen budget, that percentage is approximately twenty-point-two-five percent. Over the last thirteen years, the unassigned fund balance has seen a high of twenty-point-two-three percent, which was last year, and a low of thirteen-point-oh-nine percent, which occurred in two thousand and eleven. The city's overall efforts in revenue enhancement and cost containment have resulted in steady increase in the unassigned fund balance, therefore, thereby allowing the city to reach and maintain its goal. The city has continued to strengthen itself financially and provide its citizens with services in the most financially efficient manner possible. The result of our financial audit was an unmodified opinion, starting on page nineteen. An unmodifying opinion is known as a clean opinion, that is what you want your auditors to arrive at at the end, is a clean opinion. In addition, there's also the compliance audit work we perform on your state and federal monies, or the state and federal monies you receive, and that audit work is still ongoing and should be completed by the end of this month. Overall, our financial audit this year was a little more intense, as we analyzed and audited areas that we had not looked at in the past, and we changed our auditing standards to comply with the requirements of a national firm. We wanna appreciate, or we do appreciate, and we wanna thank Mr. Lupita Granado and his staff for the support they gave us and the patience they showed us in this process, and also we wanna thank you, the members of this commission, who continue to have confidence in our abilities and allow us the opportunity to serve as the auditors of the city of Brownsville. This is normally, Carlos had written down here, questions, but I wanna preface this by, as happy as I would be to try to answer a question, I don't have much prep and knowledge of what's detailed in this. So if you want to, I'm sure Carlos would be happy to answer any questions you have. It's free to call him and ask for him, or ask him any questions, but with that, if there are any questions, I would attempt to answer them.
I was just gonna say, you do very well, even though it's a long time since you went to college, okay?
I can still read the notes.
The fact that he's a mayor and an accountant really makes me comfortable knowing he knows what he's doing.
Thank you, Ignacio, appreciate you coming here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we need an action item, I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action item number thirteen, consideration and action to adopt reimbursement resolution twenty-eighteen dash zero thirty-four, expressing official intent to reimburse tax-exempt obligation proceed costs associated with certain capital improvements.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, city intends, on next commission meetings, to bring up an item to purchase about two-point-six, two-point-seven million dollars worth of three pieces of equipment for the Fire Department. That, details of that information will be forthcoming in next commission meeting. This, this item is basically to, to give a plan on how we plan to finance those pieces of equipment if approved, and basically on this reimbursement resolution, it allows the general fund to.
So you got two bumper trucks and an aerial truck?
An aerial ladder, correct, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, this is an action item again?
Well, it's good that we're replacing them, because I think we've needed these for a while. We need another ladder truck, additionally. So this works, Lupe? Basically, where you go ahead and you allow the expenditure, and then through next year's budget, you start paying it back, or what?
That, that is correct. Through the financing mechanism, the issue of SEOs, we go, we go through the financial advisor and start making payments on those on a long-term basis.
Although this really has nothing to do, but I would also like to see any future fire department, those CPR machines, the Lucas II, I don't know if you guys know what that are. They should be on all fire trucks and ambulance service trucks. It's a machine that performs CPR nonstop, usually like if somebody is in a fire or whatever, they have to stop CPR when they're moved through a hallway while they move furniture and whatnot to get the gurney through. This machine continues to pump nonstop, which increases the survival rate because the oxygen is pumped into your brain. But I'd like to see that on all trucks, not just the ambulance trucks.
Sure, Park Chief will.
Give them some extra money.
And we already have the, our transportation people back there, they know all about that. Anyway, this is a motion?
Yes.
Motion to acknowledge?
Second.
I think it's a motion to adopt the reimbursement. Okay, and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 14.
Thank you.
Action item number 14. Consideration and action to award a term contract for employee assistance program under interlocal agreement with Public Employee Benefits Alliance, PEBA.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. Josh Pettis, Assistant HR Director. The Human Resources Department is requesting your approval to award a term contract to Dear Oaks for the employee assistance program, EAP Services. By using PBUS, Public Employees Benefit Alliance contract, will we continue using the same provider, thus making for sending this transition to this great program?
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? If not, this is a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 15.
Action item number 15. Consideration and action on Resolution Number 2018-035 to support the creation of a Vision Zero action plan.
Good afternoon, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Commission. I'm here to present on the Vision Zero Resolution, or Resolution 2018-035. So very briefly, as background, there was 1.225 million road traffic deaths globally in 2013. Each year, more than 40,000 people are killed needlessly on American streets, and thousands more are injured. In Texas, one person was killed every two hours and 20 minutes, or one person was injured every one minute and 59 seconds on Texas streets. These are motor vehicle traffic deaths, and the data comes from the Texas Department of Transportation. So what is Vision Zero? Vision Zero takes a look at the traditional approach, which is traffic deaths are inevitable, perfect human, that we want to perfect human behavior, prevent collisions, that it's the individual's responsibility, and that saving lives is expensive. The Vision Zero approach is that traffic deaths are preventable. We have to integrate human failing in our approach, prevent fatal and severe crashes. It's a systems approach, and that saving lives is not expensive. So a Vision Zero city, they're occurring nationwide, and they set clear goals of eliminating traffic fatalities and severe injuries. The mayor publicly and officially commits to Vision Zero, and they create a plan or a strategy to, to put it in place, to do this with a clear timeframe. So the Vision Zero Resolution recognizes the importance of providing a framework to reduce traffic deaths and serious injuries to zero, while increasing safe health, equitable mobility for all. And then the resolution also commits to creating a Vision Zero action plan with input from multiple departments like fire, traffic, and PD for future consideration to protect the safety, health, and security of Brownsville's residents, businesses, employees, and visitors. Any questions?
This is a good program. I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number 16.
Action item number 16. Consideration and action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Port of Brownsville and the Brownsville Police Department in regards to critical incident response and application request for Port Security Grants Program for the purchase of a portable x-ray system.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, with the assistance, the Brownsville Police Department with the assistance of the Grants Department, we're currently looking to obtain an x-ray machine to be used by our hazardous devices unit members. The grant application requires that we have a written MOU with the Port of Brownsville in order to receive consideration for this grant. It's a location, the Port of Brownsville, we already, the bomb unit already responds to having answered 17 calls in the last four years of said location. We just need the MOU to proceed on to the next step with the grant application process. We respectfully ask your approval to go ahead and, to approve the MOU, and so we can proceed forward with the grant application. I'm open to any questions if you should have them right now.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, it's because I'm trying to figure, it says, purchase of a portable x-ray system, Commander?
Yes.
Is that a type, or is it, is it somewhere in here?
Tell me again, sir?
Because this one, the brief description of the agenda item says that it's for, a Port Security Grants Program for the purchase of a portable x-ray system, but the actual MOU is an MOU between us and the port, where we provide service for hazardous device, devices units. So we respond every time the port needs us, basically.
Yes, what it is, is that in order to go through this grant application process, it's a multi-step process, it's a very unique one, I believe, incorporated the grant department to help me, because it's, it's, it's an animal. It's a very short window, it's 60 days, where you can actually apply, it's a multi-step. The MOU is just, so we can apply for consideration. We're already on the marine security level operational plan currently as it sits, however, the plan itself, Brownsville PD's part, only addresses the patrol argumentation. We need an MOU to supplement that, to say that regards to the hazardous devices unit, which is basically the bomb unit, you know, to respond out there to a system when times of need. We already do it. The bomb squad responds regionally, we're part of the nation plan in regards to bomb callouts.
Are we the only city that they use for backup when it comes to police?
To the bombs?
Well, to anything.
No. According to the operational plan, they incorporate also the sheriff's office, they incorporate South Padre Allen Port of the PD for various aspects of the marine security of the, of the port itself.
So depending on what the situation is, depends on who they'll call?
Correct.
We just happen to specialize in detonating.
We have, we specialize in the bomb. Which, it's a good thing, because we're right on the border. We have multiple ports of entry with Mexico, so it's a win-win.
Right.
Commissioner, we specialize, our police department specializes in everything.
That's what I was going to say.
It's a person of, they have, they're the best in bomb and any other items behind it.
They're the best in the valley. In this state.
Well, we're, we're one of the few in the nation that are cross-trained in the sense that we're FBI certified, and we're Canadian certified, are two certified techs. And we also have two additional techs that are going to be going to school come this January to become certified bomb technicians, so that'd be four total.
Wow, that's, that's excellent.
Okay, guys. Motion, there a motion?
There's a motion, a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Keep up the good work, guys.
Did we adjourn?
Motion?
We did.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Keep up the good work, guys.
Did we adjourn?
Motion?
We did.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor say aye.